Board Policy Second Reading. The Employment of Employees, Educational Tours, District 128 Intergovernmental Agreement with the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services. We will discuss future agenda items and then we will adjourn to go to F and F. So how about public comment? Yeah, public comment for a committee meeting. Outstanding.
Yes.
Yeah, the microphone is on. It'll be easier to hear you. If you don't mind, if you could just tell us who you are and that's probably all you need.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks. Do I need to give you my address at this point?
No.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Alyssa Gong. I know I have three minutes. I practiced. I both work at Vernon Hills High School and I'm also a parent of a student at Vernon Hills High School. I know there's a lot of feelings about the current graduation plans for Vernon Hills and so I just wanted to provide some other thoughts and ideas. Knowing that my student will graduate in the next couple of years, I watched Vernon Hills' graduation ceremony with very close eyes this year. There's a lot of teachers present and a lot of staff and ESP more than what's required to run the event and I think it's a great opportunity. Kids love it. They love having their pictures and the parents love talking to the teachers, teachers love talking to the parents. It's a really intimate experience and I think sometimes when the public hears things and community members are concerned, they haven't actually witnessed the ceremony before. So I think that's just something to take into account. The staff that runs that event is phenomenal. Like it is so well done and it is so compassionate and the viewpoint that parents have like from the bleachers to the floor, they can see their kids, they can exchange glances. It's a lovely experience and I'm concerned that in a large venue setting, you'd lose a lot of that atmosphere and then we're at the mercy of whatever that venue is and how they handle the AV equipment and lining people up and parking and special seating for people that have any kind of visual, hearing or mobility need. That's a totally different experience that we can't control for anymore and I think that puts us at great risk to change the vibe of the entire graduation ceremony. I graduated from a large high school and we had no choice but to have our graduation in a different setting. My grandparents struggled to get into the building and find a seat even though they had special seating. It ruined the entire experience for my parents. So I just think those are things to consider. I think there's ways to streamline tickets in terms of people being able to get extra tickets from people that don't need all of their four tickets. And if it's a monetary issue where like I'm not really comparing with Libertyville, they will do what they do to serve their students. We will do what we do at Vernon Hills to serve our students. But if people are concerned about the number of dollars being spent per student, per graduation, then I think that the school board could then spend money on Vernon Hills' kids' yearbooks, their gowns and their senior party. There's other ways to spend the dollars to benefit the seniors that are graduating in a compassionate nod compared to just spending money for spending sake. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Alyssa, can I ask, have you shared that feedback with Dr. G? Because we are very interested in hearing your voice as a parent and a teacher. We are waiting to hear recommendations back from the building level as to what they recommend. So I just want to be sure that all of that feedback gets to the building level administration because we are not governing that decision. We are waiting to hear back on that decision. So please make sure in addition to the feedback that is welcome at the board level that you share that at the building level as well.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Time's up. Okay, moving on. For discussion, we have the FI 2024 ISP Member Dues. Our board is a member of the Illinois Association of School Board that provides training services, networking. We meet at IASB events. We go to the Tri-Conference each November. They assist us. They're helping us right now to completely redo our policy. That, by the way, was a tremendous amount of fun. I was working on that this couple of weeks ago. So they charge us for their services. We have an invoice. Dan, do you want to add anything to that? Or does anybody want to add anything to that?
I would say our membership, it's a professional organization of boards throughout the state and I have found our membership in that organization extremely valuable. They really focus on school boards. They do have a grasp of the diversity of public school districts in the state and seek to serve all of us. They do a lot of free training for board members, new board members, experienced board members on a wide range of topics and I've found our membership to be really instrumental in keeping all the information that we need to know kind of in one place, so.
I guess I can move on unless there's anybody else that wants to say anything there. Well, this is something we'll have to approve at the general meeting. Okay, Board Policies, Second Reading. Bryant, you can take us through that.
These are our board policies for second reading. We did a first reading back in May and many of these updates are from the last press policy. And currently we are going through a large review of all of our policies and Don was part of the board meeting a few weeks ago and Carol and I sat with IASB. So these will get incorporated into those next set of policies, these changes. And I don't think there were any changes from the last meeting, so.
Right. This is our second time around. We've already read through these. This is just one more opportunity for eyes to rest on them. I do have two questions.
Sure.
We had discussed the language about policy 6230, the Library Media Center. I have no issues with the policy. I will vote for adopting that policy tonight. But there is an administrative procedure that goes along with that.
Yes.
And I am, that has not changed, but can I just get a reassurance that we're going to look at that?
Yeah, so we wanted to adopt this policy first. I've been reaching out with the librarians and then I'll just review everything with our school board attorney and we'll update that. So there are a few minor updates, but we want to adopt this policy first that is tied in with it.
Yeah, I was, I tried to go through the language of that procedure again today and it just, the way the day count goes is not clear.
And we talked about that already and we're looking at that.
Super. Thank you. And then the Board Policy 820, Community Use of School Facilities. There's a wording that doesn't, that I'm just not sure about. So in the first paragraph, it says, "School facilities are available to community organizations during non-school hours when such use does not interfere, et cetera." Then in the third paragraph, it says, "Student groups, school-related organizations, government agencies and nonprofit organizations are granted the use of facilities at no cost during regularly staffed hours. Fees and costs shall apply during non-regularly staffed hours." So this seems to me to bring two different things, during school hours and not during school hours.
Or staffed hours.
Or staffed hours.
Custodial staff, I think is what they're referring to in that reference.
Okay.
Because we have first and second shift custodians.
So during non-school hours, so outside of the regular school day. Then in the other one, it says, "At no cost during regularly staffed hours." Okay, so that could just mean custodial staff.
Custodial hours. And that's the way our, so then our fee schedule and other terms, we have that that we give to our renters and, and so those, if they're, again, during the regular staffed hours that we have buildings and ground, security there, they're not paying anything for those.
So my question then is, because they're separated, in the first one, it says, "As long as it doesn't interfere with any school function or affect the safety," I would think that that would apply regardless, whether it's staffed or not staffed. You would not have them interfere with any school function. So that's all.
Yep.
I'm pointing out that it doesn't matter when they're here or who else is in the building. It should not interfere with any school function or affect the safety of students or employees or affect the property or liability of the school district.
Correct.
So if the language says that, then I'm all good, but I can't tell if the language says that.
Yeah, so it's saying that we can open it up to our community organization during, after school hour, so after 3:30, when it doesn't interfere with any of our school functions and affect the property or liability. So if we have an organization wants to come in and rent our facility, again, that rental fee, there, we have different structures based upon what they have, but we do look at that first. Is this, this is when, you know, John Fischel, our rental coordinator, and I look at somebody asking us to use the facilities and we say, okay, we go to the buildings and say, is the building available? Do you have a dance going on that night? Do you have something going on, games? So we look at that one first and then we go down to, okay, now are we staffed or do they have to then pay for a staff to come in extra? Whether that's, we have actually three different staff people that may come in during rentals. So we have security, we have somebody that supervises and, you know, is kind of walking around with the group a little bit and helping them make sure they're organized, and then buildings and grounds. And if we are staffed during that time, we don't have to double staff, then we try to help offset the cost for some of our organizations.
Okay. It also says, "At no cost." So if it's during regularly staffed hours, they would have no cost associated with using our facilities?
So that's student groups, school-related organization, government agencies and nonprofits.
Right.
But then if you look at, we also have other organizations that are money-making ones and we'll charge them.
Right. But if the local chapter of something that's a nonprofit decided that they wanted to use our facilities during regularly staffed hours, it would, we would give that to them at no cost.
Correct. Yes.
As long as it doesn't interfere.
Yes.
But it doesn't say that.
That's when we go up to the first one. It doesn't interfere during the non-school hours when it doesn't interfere. So we first, that's our first priority, is does it interfere with anything? That's paragraph one.
That's during non-school hours.
Which is like after 3:30, but we're still staffed from 3:30 to like 10 o'clock at night.
Okay. I'm not, I don't want to nitpick. It's just not clear to me. Just because of the way it's written, it, it seems to say that there's two separate categories. There's non-staffed hours and there's regularly staffed hours.
No, no. So the way I read it is that anything outside of the school day, which is after 3:30, if they want to use the facility, they can, but if we're staffed, they can get it for free. So if they, if they want to use something from 10 o'clock at night till 3:00 in the morning, we're not staffed and they may, we may have to charge them if they want to do like something, you know, I'm just throwing a number out there, you know, something. But if they want to do something from 7:00 at night till 10:00, we're staffed and that's non-school hours.
Okay.
One is saying time of day and the other is saying fully staffed, staffed or not. It's almost like two decisions.
So would it help to have some language that clears that up?
We have all that in our procedures for rentals.
So it's an AP?
Yeah, so yeah, all of our procedures that we hand out to our renters outlines all of that and then if they get charged, what they get charged and everything.
Okay. Good. I have no other questions. Does anybody else have any questions on any of the policies? You're satisfied with the second reading and we're going to move forward tonight. Ms. Drumke, it's good to see you.
May I apologize?
No worries.
Do I have enough liquids?
It's a volunteer job. You're not late. Okay, so Employment of Employees.
These are recent employment employees, some resignations, some replacements for some leave of absence and also for some of our ESP. And we will have, and their second page has a list for coaching and extracurricular staff. And we're still in the hiring process, so we'll have more coming in July.
Any questions? Okay, we're on to Educational Tours. Hello, Boston.
How come they never take us? We ask every time.
So this is an educational tour, student travel to or for the JEA National Convention in Boston. I don't need to go through that, right?
Nope.
Nope.
We just need to see if there's any questions or discussions among the board.
Okay, I don't see any questions or discussions other than can we please go?
Yeah.
Very well organized request.
Okay, and then we have an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services.
Seems promising. You know, in order to recoup.
A way to recoup funding from Medicare.
Any additional funding, we'll have to enter into this IGA. It seems like fairly standard legalese wording. We have several IGAs. I didn't note any questions or problems entering into this one. Does anybody else have any discussion or questions?
Are most of our peer districts also entering?
Yes.
Is this a change from the past? Like what caused this? Because I don't, we've never done this before that I remember.
I think Dr. Ellis Bowen will use her expertise to answer that better than I.
So good evening, everyone. So basically the change is now, prior to the new changes per the state, the Medicaid reimbursement was strictly for students with special services that were receiving services such as OT, psych services. We could also bill for IEP meetings and things of that nature. Now they have extended or expanded services to any student that is receiving some type of assistance within the school that is receiving Medicaid. So now you don't have to have that IEP designation in order to receive the services.
And it's not insignificant. No further questions there? All right, we're on to Future Agenda Items. There are several listed in the board packet.
Do we want to add a update on calendar guidelines at some point or we?
Yes, in my report, we do, we will have the parent input that we received. So yes, that will be, the results will be shared with the board. And then if there are any other questions that the board would want us from our discussion back in May or April, we would be bringing all of that information back to the July meeting and then seeing what direction the board wants to take it from there. Thank you. We will add that.
And then an update on the graduation? When, when will we know when they're done discussing?
I believe the timeline, they're going to visit some facilities over the summer. I believe they reassemble the Committee of Parents and Staff Members in August. So I don't know, it might be at August, but if not for sure, by September, we would have an update on the Vernon Hills graduation site.
Is there any additional work on the grading and assessment initiatives happening over the summer or is that going to pick back up during the year?
We did offer funding for teachers and teens who wanted to be part of the pilot to have some paid time to work on what that might look like for their team or to transition some of those, that new language into their syllabi. So people who volunteered for the pilot are receiving financial support to do some of the work, but in earnest, it will pick up again back when everyone returns.
So this is the mini-update. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to adjourn the P and P meeting. Jim, if you're out there.
Record time.
Can we, can we start F and F yet? I mean, we got two minutes. We gotta wait. I think we do. I, I'm 100% certain this is the first time that's ever happened.
What'd you get?
Yeah.
How about showing it to them?
Doesn't matter.
Well, do we noted then? Thank you for participating with the Policy Committee with IASB.
It was slow, but it was interesting. I have a feeling it's going to get slower still. At least this time we were answering questions.
This calls to order the Facilities and Finance Committee meeting for Monday, June 26th. We are going to waive the Pledge of Allegiance until the start of the regular board meeting, but we will be starting with public comment and then moving on to items for discussion, of which there are several. So is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Nope, going once, going twice? All right, seeing none, let's move on to items for discussion, starting with Summer 2023 Capital Projects Update. This is always a very busy time for our Capital Projects folks as they try to take advantage of the fewer students in the building to maintain our facilities. We have a list. Dan, Mark?
Yeah, so we have the written report that we included for you. I guess, Mark, any highlights? You don't have to read through every single one, but anything that's major that sticks out?
Everything's progressing well. There is, as you noticed when you came in, the parking lots got done. They were scheduling and I had done the report and we were.
Looks great.
Get them done all this weekend, so that project's completed, so.
Looks great and I appreciate the pictures that you include. It just kind of gives us an idea of where.
Idea.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
She read a children's book.
Yeah.
It was school construction.
Okay, any comment questions? Okay, moving on to item B, the Fiscal Year 2023 Audit Engagement. This is something that happens every year, the letter for approval.
Yeah, this is our audit engagement for Fiscal Year 23, similar audit to what we had last year, but I did note the costs are up, like a lot of contracts that we are, we have been running across lately. This is up partly for inflation, but also just the amount of things that have to get reported on are increasing every year and this year is no different. So that's affecting the cost as well. So not just their own staffing costs, but also there's more things to have to report on. So GASB 96 is a particular one. That's a new requirement that we have to report. GASB is the Government Accounting Standards Board. They're the ones that decide all the, all the auditing and accounting rules essentially. And the GASB 96 is about subscription-based software agreements. So if you have a multi-year agreement for use of software, let's, let's say we sign a multi-year agreement with Google to use Google stuff. Normally that, that future cost is not recorded as a liability, it's just whatever the annual cost is and they have understandably, and it's actually more correct to say like you actually have a liability there for multiple years out that we, we should be accounting for. That's really what that is. And so districts like us are going to be experiencing that. So that costs at $56,700 for the base cost and then the GASB 96 is going to be billed separately based on the hours that it takes them because they don't know, it's never been implemented before, so.
I appreciate that level of detail because when I first looked at it, I thought, that looks like it's more expensive than previous years. But understanding that the requirements are increasing, meaning it's going to be more expensive to accomplish that audit, I appreciate the, the detail. Any questions? We'll be approving that in a few hours at the regular board meeting.
A few hours.
Let's do it sooner than that.
An hour.
I'm sorry.
I'm available to vote sooner.
Anytime after 7:00 PM. How about that?
Good.
I love that you all jumped on it that way.
I know we talked about this last year and that there's value in maintaining our relationship with Miller and that it would take, we'd be spending more money trying to bring another company up to speed with what we're doing, but is this pretty standard? And, and I mean, a 14 and a half percent increase, I know, is also indicative of the responsibilities of the reporting, but that seems to be very high. Is it worth the district looking to seeing if there is an alternative provider that would not be as financially draining as we talked about last year?
I don't, I believe this is more of a standard of what you're seeing. I think there's other companies that are, the increase is higher. Because it's context, it's not just the increase, but also the cost. So I think our cost is decent. We're not terribly high, but we're not the lowest either. But a lot of them are depending on, we've talked about this a little bit before, what is the actual final product that's being produced? Is it just the state-required audit? Is it something that's fancier, which is really what we do, the annual comprehensive financial report? That's the highest standard. That's what we do. So comparing that apples to apples, I don't know that you're going to find something that saves you a meaningful amount of money. It might save you a few thousand bucks. It's not going to be meaningful in my opinion and I got to be honest.
Well, I know the upload cost is going to be substantial.
Not even that, just like a lot of accounting firms are dealing with the same staffing issues and I don't see us getting better service at this point. So that, that's the part that matters to me is getting these reports done in a timely manner. I don't see alternatives that are going to be more successful for us.
Good question.
I will also note, we had our annual review. Miller Cooper talks to the board president and the superintendent every year and I've been talking to the same guy and he is incredibly professional and really it's great to see how well-versed he is with our district, our finances, our staff. And I do think that's also worth something, as you indicated, not only just the cost of a transition in terms of time and energy, but the level of professionalism, I think, is, I'm sure other firms are equally as professional, but I don't think we could do better in terms of professionalism based on my limited experience. Dan obviously could speak more authoritatively on that, but I've been.
I mean, I know you're thinking about, I just think it's worth, a question worth asking and saying that this is something that we're considering because I know there's also some complacency and we don't want to be in that position either.
Agreed. And so when I first saw that, so I was like, actually I was sending them emails because like, because sometimes the engagement letter might go straight to the superintendent or straight to the board. I was like, as soon as you get it, I want to see it because I'm really curious to see what the numbers are. And as soon as we got the numbers, I was doing a little digging to try to find out like, is everybody else seeing this? Is this consistent? And then even last year, talking to a couple of districts that changed auditors and so I was kind of listening to that a little bit, but those experiences didn't go very well. And so I think this is, I think this is the best arrangement we have for the work that we're asking for at this time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Good comments. Moving on to item C, Fiscal Year 2024 Treasurers Bond Renewal. This is something that's required by the state.
Yes, and this is something that is a 0% increase.
finances, our staff. And I do think that's also worth something, as you indicated, not only just the cost of the transition in terms of time and energy, but the level of professionalism, I think, is, I'm sure other firms are equally as professional, but I don't think we could do better in terms of professionalism, based on my limited experience. Dan obviously could speak more authoritatively on that, but I've been.
I mean, I know you're thinking about, I just think it's worth, a question worth asking and saying that this is something that we're considering because I know there's also some complacency, and we don't want to be in that position either.
Agreed. And so when I first saw, so I was like, actually, I was sending them emails because sometimes the engagement letter might go straight to the superintendent or straight to the board. I was like, as soon as you get it, I want to see it because I'm really curious to see what the numbers are. And as soon as we got the numbers, I was doing a little digging to try to find out, like, is everybody else seeing this? Is this consistent? And then even last year, talking to a couple of districts that changed auditors, and so I was kind of listening to that a little bit, but those experiences didn't go very well. And so I think this is, I think this is the best arrangement we have for the work that we're asking for at this time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Good comments. Moving on to item C, Fiscal Year 2024 Treasurers' Bond Renewal. This is something that's required by the state.
Yes, and this is something that is a 0% increase, which is nice. So it's been flat for a while now. And hopefully, it's something you'll always pay for and never, ever have to use. So this is a treasurer's bond, so state law requires that your treasurer is bonded. I am the board-appointed treasurer. And so what that means is we issue a bond, and really the bond is between me and you, the board. And so it's, and so Liberty Mutual is the surety. So they're the ones that basically, if I did something that compromised my responsibilities as treasurer, you could cash in those bonds. Liberty Mutual would have to, you would make a claim, Liberty Mutual, if it was a valid claim, would have to pay you, and then they would come after me. And so how you set that is, there's guidance from the state that it's, right now, it's 25%. A lot of times, people interpret it as 25% of your year-end fund balance. It's not actually true. It's really 25% of the highest cash balance you'll ever have in the year. And for us and pretty much every other district, at least in Lake County, that's going to be October is our highest cash balance. So I look at that, and I try to give wiggle room because I never would want us to be in the position of being under-bonded. So I look at that and 25% of that, so 30 million is where we've been at. We used to be a little bit higher, but 30 million, I still feel comfortable. After a year, I want to revisit that again. We might be able to go down a little bit, but I don't, I mean, you might save again a few thousand dollars, which is going to be helpful, but I don't want to put you in a position that's going to compromise the effectiveness of the bond. So you're doing it as a safer climate, also, it's a good practice that you should have.
Yeah, I think we've always been comfortable with a cushion there. Being a little over-insured is better than under-insured.
I say we risk it.
Hmm?
I'm kidding.
You're just in that mood today, aren't you?
There's no one here.
Any other comments? All right, that's another item we will be voting on very shortly in the general meeting or the regular meeting.
You're a fast learner.
Moving on to item D, Drapery Cleaning and Flame Retardant Application Approval.
So this one, this is probably something that didn't work out quite as how we were hoping it to, but I think the solution we have is reasonable. So, Mark, do you want to kind of walk through this?
Sure. The company that we used to use lost their employees, and I think they're out of business. They don't answer the phone. So there's only a few companies in Chicago that area that do this. I believe it's three major ones. And then this is, this onsite, which we got the quote from, is nationwide. We were only able to get one of the vendors in the Chicago area to come out and give us pricing besides this onsite. But then it fell into Libertyville's curtains were supposed to be good for another year. So they came in, being a new company, had them inspect them, and they failed. So that put us in a position that we have to have them tested this year and cleaned and tested this year. So.
So the expense that we would have planned for next year.
Right.
Will be this year.
Not hit in the same year with both schools. So we'll end up working that out in a schedule in the future. But because they're both coming in at the same time, it puts us over our threshold.
I'm assuming that all other schools are then in the position of using this company?
All the other schools that were under contract with the local companies are still. Apparently, they're not looking to pick up business because they short employees, not sure. But one company did come out, and they were substantially more expensive for both schools. So.
What is the cycle on the cleaning and application?
It's a three-year cycle, and you can renew up to five years at a year at a time. So we were trying to renew Libertyville, and they came in, tested, and they failed.
Okay.
So that's where they both fall in. At this point, we did get able to use co-op pricing on it to have this company. And the nice thing about this company is they come with a semi. The local companies take your drapes down, four weeks later, you get them back, they put them up. They come into your parking lot, they park their truck, they clean them, they mend them, they do everything onsite. It's a mobile facility. So there's also a cost savings. They're not paying for a building. They're not doing all that other stuff. So I would say at Libertyville, the other pricing was about $18,000 more. And for Vernon Hills, it was about $17,000 more than what this pricing is.
Good.
And part of the story, the original plan we were anticipating, we would do one building and then we would do Vernon Hills and then just recertify LHS for one more year. And so we didn't think we would need to bid it because one building would be under the bidding threshold. We should be fine. When we found out it failed, it was like, oh, no, now you have to, we have to bid it because that's going to be over the bidding threshold. And based on the timeline of getting this done, when is it done this summer?
It's done this summer.
So based on the timeline of putting specs together, getting it out on the street, and getting somebody back, we just thought was going to be a tougher timeline to meet, especially during the summertime. But being able to access the national contract allowed us, allowed us to move forward with that. So it wasn't the ideal situation that we wanted, but I think this will work out just fine.
And I know you asked, but so we're generally expected to have to do this every three to five years, you said?
Yeah, every three years. The certification is the three-year certification. You can recertify up to five years, one year at a time after that.
So we won't see this for another three years?
We won't see, yeah, we won't see it for another three years.
Got it. Okay.
And I don't know if it was said, but let's also point out that what we're certifying is the flame retardant.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Like, I don't know if anybody's said that here. If it failed the test, that's a problem.
Right. It's a little safety issue.
Yeah, no, I don't think anybody's disagreeing that we need to do this. We definitely need to do this.
No, I just don't think, like, we've all read this, and we know it's about, I don't think anybody out there has read it yet.
The public to make sure.
A large percentage of our curtains are, what do you call, flameproof? They're supposed to melt. But when the dirt and the dust gets on those, that's what catches fire. So.
Keeping them clean is essential.
It's like my grill this weekend. I was cooking burgers, and I noticed all of a sudden, the temperature in my grill was like beyond 700, and I thought, that's not normal. And all the stuff that fell in the bottom of my grill, that caught on fire. My grill didn't catch on fire. So.
Same idea.
We prefer that.
Pro tip. And then related question, semi-related, but what is the lifespan of a set of draperies for these stages? Do you know about how old each set is?
Actually, the most of them are, there were sets bought, not sure, in 2019, there was, at one school was bought, and in 2021, another set was bought, not the full set, but they are rotated out.
In wings, yeah.
I think there may be, you might get 15 years. It depends on the curtain themselves.
So wait, if we bought drapes in '21, shouldn't they be under their three-year guarantee for certification? Not the drapes that fail?
It's a, it's a technicality. They say, you know, in the warranty from the manufacturer because it's flame inherent, that it won't catch. But, you know, when they tested, they were dirty. And so, you know, flames were produced on the surface of it. So.
Okay. So we'll be also voting on that shortly so that you can get going on it and get it accomplished this summer. Any other questions, comments? All right. Moving on to item E, Disposal of Equipment. There's quite a list here.
Yeah, this is.
Summer cleanup.
IT, they do it a few times a year, the big old list of tech stuff. So that's what's listed there. I gave you the, sorry, John was on vacation last week, so I gave you the best that I could figure out how to do this. The information from Temple about the information and also the place that they also send it to as well for disposal.
Okay.
The recycling company.
That's in the consent vote agenda?
So I know I brought this up before. I would like, is it, is it too laborious and time-consuming to know what happened to this stuff? Because I know we have sell, scrap, or donate. But we've never seen the follow-up report of what has happened to this. I know it's happened, but like, I'm just, if it's going to take too much time, I understand that. But I think we have, I know we make our best efforts to try to donate and find something. It just seems like this laundry list, there has to be something that somebody could possibly use. And I would, I would like to see what happened to it.
Yes. No, we've definitely talked about this before. We also talked about, we also talked about setting up a thing to circle back with you. And I know we started on that in the spring. I don't know where that is, and I totally forgot all about it. So let me follow up and bring it back to you next time to see where we're at. Because we have talked about this, and we did talk about following up, okay, what actually did happen with those. So thank you for bringing that up.
I mean, I would be fine just seeing this spreadsheet with the acronyms on the side, like just what happened to it. I think we.
Yeah.
For this set of items, though, it says a professional electronics waste recycling company is picking up these materials. So whatever that means, they're recycling, I'm sure what they can salvage to recycle.
Right, that's, but if it's being recycled, then it's all being disposed of. None of it is going to be donated. Well, then, that's what we should say, that they're all going to be scrapped.
So my understanding when I read this was, it was clear it's all going to be scrapped.
Okay. It says that in the cover letter.
There's a few items that have a D next to them for donate, that can be donated. But I always assume that anything that doesn't designate, we've donated it, is scrapped in the most environmentally conscious way we can.
Right. And I know we do that. I think not just for this list, but for future lists. Because there are things that we do that are costly, that we do say that we're going to dispose of, that we've never really seen what has happened after. And I know I would like to see that.
Correct. And we have clearly talked about that. We've clearly talked about bringing back a list. I completely have forgotten about this. So we'll bring this back to you.
Thank you. Moving on to item F, June 30 bills payable. This is an informational item for the board. Any?
Yep, just that. We have bills here, and we're hoping that everything is done. But there are, at times, always, something that comes in that we want to make sure we get into fiscal year, end of the fiscal year. And so we'll report that out in July. It's usually not a ton, not very substantial, but it's, yeah. So this is just an annual thing we do.
Okay. Any final comments before we move on to future agenda items? There's a list here. Any additions, questions? Okay, that adjourns, FNF at 6:20.
Wild.
It's definitely a record.
I'm running them all.
Good evening, everyone. So nice to see a full house. We are celebrating a lot of student recognition tonight. So we're going to get the ball rolling. Going to review the agenda quickly. We're going to say the pledge, have roll call, and we have, we're going to do the public hearing for our budget quickly. Then we will have student recognition and an invitation for public comment following student recognition. We've got a couple of FOIA requests to recognize, and we will have further good news from Dr. Herman. We do have a consent vote agenda tonight. These are items that are routinely approved in one motion. We discuss them extensively in committee. At this time, are there any board members wishing to remove any of the items listed in the consent vote agenda to discuss separately?
No.
Seeing none, moving on to items for action. We will have an adoption of our fiscal year 24 budget. We will approve the ISB annual member dues. We will have a semi-annual review of our closed session minutes. We will read a set of board policies for our second reading and vote for adoption. We will vote on a resolution authorizing commencement of social media litigation. We do have an intergovernmental agreement to discuss and vote on with the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services. We will vote on renewing the fiscal year 24 treasurer's bond, as well as our fiscal year 23 audit engagement. The last item to vote on will be our drapery cleaning and flame retardant application approval for the draperies at both buildings. In our for information section, we will have our superintendent's report. We will discuss any board comments and events. We will not have an IASB report. Do we have a report for CEDOL?
Yes.
We do. Any other reports that board members might wish to discuss? We will review our future agenda items. We will retire to executive session for the purpose of discussing employment of an employee under 5 ALCS 120/2C1, as well as discussing collective negotiating matters under 5 ALCS 120/2C2. After that, we will be voting on a resolution authorizing a notice to remedy, and then we will adjourn. So if I could ask everybody to please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in this republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jim Batson. Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Here.
Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Sonal Kulkarni. Casey Rooney.
Here.
We note five members present, and as we've already reviewed the agenda, we will call the public hearing for fiscal year 24 open. Do we have any public comment regarding the fiscal year 24 budget? If there's anybody wishing to address the board at this time?
Maybe could I go through the presentation and then?
So we're listed that there's, before the presentation, we're supposed to ask for public comment on this portion.
Oh, okay.
So if we have any members of the public wishing to address the board regarding the fiscal year 24 budget, please go to the podium. Seeing none, going once, going twice, we will move on to the budget hearing presentation.
All right. Hopefully, pretty brief here. So what we're going to do is walk through, go to the next one. We're going to walk through, just a reminder, so best I can give you context of fiscal year 24, is give you something to compare it to, which is fiscal year 23. Remind you of that in our financial projections. I'll walk through a little bit of what is actually happening for fiscal year 23, and then I'll review our fiscal 24 budget, and then note about fund balance and capital projects at the end. So we go forward a couple. So next, so FYI for everybody, our FY23 budget had a deficit of $1.9 million. But if you go to the next slide, we knew about this. This is primarily an effect of switching our revenue recognition of fully deferring our fund balance, or fully deferring our spring taxes. So we knew this was going to happen, and we knew this was going to be a one-year thing. And so as you can see, our projections are assuming that this is going to happen, and it's going to be over with. Don't worry about fiscal of '27 and '28 yet. A lot of things can happen, and that's based on a lot of assumptions that the second you make them, the assumptions change anyways. So that's just a frame of reference, $1.9 million deficit. So then fiscal year 23 actuals, just stay here for, go back, just stay there for a second. The fiscal year is not done yet. Even though there are four days, we have a lot of money still to spend in the next four days because we have our June 30th payroll to still run. And we have to recognize our revenues. Once we, once the bank statements come in and we settle all of our revenues. So I don't really have really good information for you on our fiscal year 23 actuals yet. However, now we'll go to the next one. There were two sources of revenue that the board should be well aware of at this point, that we've informed a few times, is two sources of revenue came in much higher than we anticipated. One is called CPPRT. That's personal property taxes. That's basically money we get from the Illinois Department of Revenue based on, mostly based on the income and tax income from companies in Illinois. So if they have a lot of revenue and they have a lot of taxable income, part of that tax comes to us through CPPRT. And so that was way higher than we all anticipated. So that's up about $790,000 so far, more than what we budgeted. And then interest income as well. We knew rates were higher, didn't think they would stay this high this long, especially a year ago when we were estimating this. And so that also came in higher. So if you think that we are in a deficit of about 1.9, this is showing about 1.5 the other way. So I would say we're probably going to end up closer to flat, maybe a small surplus by the end of the fiscal year. But we won't know that till all the dust settles. Just to give you a frame of reference. Now, if we go on, so here is the operating budget for fiscal year 24. Just real quick, a few major assumptions. There's a lot of numbers in this budget. There's, this is a $100 million budget on expenditures and $100 million on revenue. So this is $200 million budget really is what we're talking about. There's a lot of numbers here. But when you zoom out, as far as I can zoom out, the major things that are happening, and the biggest thing on the revenue side is a 5% CPI. That's the interest, or that's essentially the rate of inflation that we're able to access for property taxes. And the Libertyville TIF was recaptured. That was the biggest impact. And on the expenditure side, our biggest impact are the people that we have. So that's the staff. are the people that we have, so that's the staffing plans that the board approved earlier this spring. That's the raises built in. And then one thing to note that is significant, it represents about $1 million, is there was a one-time COLA 2% stipend payment to everybody. This year, that falls off for next year, so that's why, that's impacting the percentage change on the salary side. And the other major thing that we are, we are facing is inflation. Inflation is here. We are facing it a lot. It is showing, it is showing up in double digits in a lot of places. The best example I can give you is our medical insurance. Our PPO is up 17.5%, and our HMO is up 12.7%. And that's just one small taste, but those are big numbers that's doing that. So then, if we go to the next slide, there's a lot of numbers here, but even that, this is a summary still, a very high-level summary. Really three numbers to pay attention to. Next year, our operating budget has that bottom number, a, I would say, a small surplus of $680,000. It's not quite as much as I would want. I'd love to see a million, but I think we're, I think we're going to do pretty good there. And then, if you can see on the revenue side, 7% increase on the revenue. Most of that is due to the property taxes. And then expenditure side is 4%. And that's where you'll see there's salary changes there, benefit changes, and then a host of things that are a lot impacted by inflation. So that, that's a really quick look at our operating budget. I still feel like it's a good budget. We're able to afford all the things that we talked about doing, and so we're able to do that. If we go to the next one, just a quick note on fund balance and capital projects. So last, when we had talked, we even talked about this, I believe in May, the estimated fund balance that would be available for capital projects that we talked about, in the, somewhere in the range of $13 to $14 million. We identified the top three projects based on our prioritization, which is the LHS cafeteria renovation, renovation of bathrooms at LHS, and a reconfiguration of LST offices in Vernon Hills. And so, based on that, if you go to the next one, next slide, there we go. What I've put in on the capital projects fund side is a $3 million estimate. So that is an estimate to cover really three things. One is to finalize the transition pathways, which is a project that's happened really mostly this year, but we haven't totally closed out that project yet. We're still waiting for kind of a final legal thing to sign off on, so that we can finally pay out the remaining, it's like $20,000 or something left, but we can't, I can't do it until we get a final sign off. Then we have the reserve for life safety work that we had talked about, the 10-year life safety work at Vernon Hills. It might be $130,000, I think, is realistic what we might end up doing, so it'll cover that work that we have to do, and then a reserve for the start of these new projects. So actually tomorrow, a team is starting to meet for the LHS cafeteria renovation. And so we're going, this year will, or, you know, most of the, next year will be about designing, especially in the fall, and then bidding that out and getting everything ready. It'll start in the spring. So we'll incur some costs, but we're not going to get the bulk of the cost until probably next year. So this is meant to cover additional costs for something that we don't actually know how much it's going to cost yet, but I need to put a placeholder in there. And this doesn't affect our operating numbers at all. So that's an overview of our fiscal '24 budget.
Great. Do the board members have any questions? I will note for the public, we have been discussing this extensively since February, so we have been questioning, receiving updated reports, receiving more information. So if the board members don't have any questions, that's the reason why. But now would be the time, if you do.
I think we've asked them all.
I know that we have. Okay. So just getting back to my place on the agenda. I will now declare the hearing closed. The good news about that is that we are now ready for our communication section, and we can kick off our student recognition.
Good evening. It's nice to see a big crowd here. My name is Brian Kelly. I'm the associate superintendent, and unfortunately, our principals, we kind of give them a little bit of time off in the summer, but I work closely with our athletic directors at both schools, John Woods and Brian McDonald. So I'm here to help present a lot of awards to our students for this past year. And I know we have some coaches that also help me to present. So as I call them up, I also want to recognize, there are students that couldn't be here today because of the summer. I do want to recognize their name, if they're not here, and just recognize them for their accomplishments. So we have a lot of great things. So I am going to start with Libertyville High School, and I would like to recognize, and if you are here, come up for your presentation. I would like to recognize first for girls' softball. Those recognized from the Illinois Coaches Association, Adriana Callahan and Michaela Boone, and I know Michaela was not able to attend. Is Adriana? For water polo, we have two water polo that were recognized for Allstate. Our water polo teams had a nice year at Libertyville High School and made it to the sectional finals. For girls' water polo, Emily Fink, and for boys, Eric Sparks. And some other individuals. For boys, Libertyville Boys Basketball, and they were, made it to the section, they were sectional champs. And one of their individuals was voted to the Allstate team, Aiden Boone, and I know he couldn't be here either today. For girls' basketball, and they were regional champions at Libertyville, and a couple players recognized by the Illinois Basketball Coaches Association, Kate Rule, I know she couldn't be here with us, and Emily Fisher. And Emily's going to play in Maryland next year, so congratulations to both of them. We'd also like to thank our, or recognize our cheerleaders that were voted to the Illinois High School Cheerleading Association, Coaches Association, Allstate at Libertyville High School. I know they were state qualifiers, and finished ninth in the co-ed division, Nicole Smith and Christian Rittner, and they were unable to attend today. Let's recognize some of our Vernon Hills High School athletes. For basketball, the Illinois Basketball Coaches Association, special mention, Allstate, Milan Ravel. Millen, last name? Ravel. All right. For girls' basketball, I know Grace couldn't be here, but for Vernon Hills High School, like to recognize Grace Kepke. And for honorable mention, Allstate Boys Volleyball, David Rezepa? Rezepa? Next up, we'd like to recognize those cheerleaders from Vernon Hills High School. Again, they were state qualifiers and finished seventh in the state in the medium division. And I know a couple of them are here with us today. Dylan Klein, Sarah Kuzinski, and Riley Donaldson. Next up, we would like to recognize somebody from the fall, and she finished in eighth place for girls' golf. And just a little history, she finished in, previously in fifth place in the state freshman year, and 14th place her junior year, and eighth place. Is that right? All right, Lexi Schulman. Congratulations. And she's going to play with Central Michigan University next year, so we wish her well. Next up, we'd like to recognize some of our badminton players from Vernon Hills High School that were recognized by the Illinois Association of Badminton Coaches. So I'll call them up here. Kaylee Bennett, Allstate Team for Doubles, and Arushi Panda, Allstate Team for Doubles. Singles player, Nihal Kocarni. For the next presentation of athletes, I'd like to introduce our head coach for boys' track and field, Ross Caton. He thought he was going to get out of this, but I'm going to have him.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely. I've got your, I'll hold on to these.
Okay. Well, I kind of want to announce them to come on up first and be recognized, and hopefully they all brought their medals to show off. First, I'd like to bring up Maddox Fluno. Maddox, along with the other three gentlemen, got fifth place in the 4x400-meter dash last month at Charleston, at Eastern Illinois, at the state meet. Next, I'd like to call up David Casilla. Charlie Blackmer. And then Jake Slavish. So I first want to talk about Jake, because Jake not only anchored the 4x400-meter relay for us, but he also was Allstate in the 300 intermediate hurdles as well. He placed seventh in the hurdles, so he's making some noise there with his medals. But I also just want to talk about Jake, Jake as well, because he actually has one more at home that he got last year with our 4x200-meter relay. And I think it just speaks to kind of the talent and the commitment that Jake has had, and his contributions to the team and to the school and the program. He is the only athlete in our program that has been Allstate three times. We've had several guys, you know, once, twice, but he is the only one that has done it up until this point, three different times. And it speaks to his commitment, and how much we can depend on him, because track is a very long season. We go January through, through the end of May, pretty much all second semester, and it's a roller coaster ride. And as coaches, we try to have kind of predictions. How's the season going to turn out? How are we going to finish up the sectionals? Who's going to go on to state? Who could possibly get Allstate? And Jake was always there for us. I mean, Jake, you know, he works hard, and we can depend on him, but he's had his own setbacks. Last year, was it the second or third to last hurdle at sectionals last year? He was in second place, top two go to state. Footing got a little off, hit the hurdle, fell, didn't qualify. Luckily, he still got down, got Allstate in our 4x2. But that was something, you know, you know, everything can go as planned, and then one little thing can, 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 you know, change, change those plans quickly. And Jake, we knew he had the ability to get, to be back in that position. But like I said, it's a roller coaster ride. The week, less than a week before sectionals at our conference meet, Jake's in first place, 300 hurdles, and the guy next to him, his arm goes wide, kind of knocks Jake a little bit, gets his footing off a little bit. He tries to stretch out to keep his, to keep his steps between hurdles, and he was just a bit short, hit the hurdle, landed hard, scraped some skin, bruised his heel. And as a coach, you know, coach is, we always go to the worst-case scenario. Like, we know Jake's tough and everything, you know, bruised heel, but last year, sectionals, less than a week, he's running a sectional. He's got to qualify. Is he going to do it? And I don't know if Jake ever worried about it at all, but it certainly didn't seem like it. He qualified the next week at sectionals, and then the next week at state, ran a personal best, broke the school record in prelims to make it to finals, and then finished seventh overall in the state on the biggest stage. Because track, you go to a high school track meet, you have Ben, it's in a football stadium, but those stands are built for football games, not for track meets. So there's very few in the stands, and the voices you hear are those crazy parents whose kids are running at that moment. We've got some of those parents over here right now. And so when you get to the state meet, you're now looking at a packed Division One football stadium, all looking down on you. It's bigger than anything you've been at all year long. And so I now want to talk about these four in the context of the 4x400-meter relay, and what they did at state. But even before that, we talked about expectations. We had no expectations that a 4x4 relay was going to qualify for state, let alone get Allstate at the beginning of the season. We were more focused on different relays, because these four guys, Jake, I've talked about Jake. Charlie, though, all I knew about Charlie was pretty much his hairline from remote learning freshman year in AP Human Geography. He was a volleyball kid. I knew he had a great cross-country season last year, and I know his teammates who do track were on him about coming out for track. So when swimming season ended, Charlie decided to come out, that wasn't something we were necessarily counting on, and that changed things for us. Maddox, four-year guy, but Maddox used to be a little shorter freshman year. And we had discussions about Maddox, like, senior year, maybe he can be a backup on the 4x2 if somebody goes down. We're not really sure. And the development that he's done, and, yeah, sure, he grew a bit, but he also works his tail off, day in, day out in practice. And what he was able to do in step up, what we were expecting, you know, was far beyond. And then David, David's on track for four years, but this was David's first full season. COVID cut into his freshman year. COVID, then IHSA's scheduling overlapping with football, cut into his sophomore year. Last year, caught with a broken collarbone, missed the first half of the season. We knew David was fast. We just didn't know how fast he could be if he was healthy for a whole season. And so we didn't see this relay come together until less than a month before state. They ran together for the first time. And their first time together, they broke our school record, and they ran a state qualifying time. The next time they were all back together was at sectionals. They ran state qualifying again, but they didn't run as fast as they did two weeks prior. Now, I'm a throws coach. I can't take much credit for these guys at all, but rather credit goes to those three gentlemen. Raise your hand. But I was worried, because when we ran our school record, we were fifth best in the state. By the time we qualified for state, we were now 18th best, because all these other teams were running all these faster times. And I talked about the pressure that that state meet brings. And kids can rise and kids can fall with that pressure. Jake rose for that pressure. We saw him do it last year in the 4x2. He did it again in the 300s. Now, the tough part is about a relay is, you not only need one kid to rise, you need all four. You got to make sure those handoffs are clean, those exchange zones. Don't get too crowded and knock somebody over. And all four of these guys stepped up, and in prelims, they knocked two and a half seconds off their previous best time, their old-school record, to make it to finals. And then, the very next day, they broke that school record again. And they stepped up when it mattered most, and that speaks to their drive, their focus, the effort they put into it for the last five months, or for some the last four years. And it also speaks to the quality of our coaches and the support we get from our parents. And it was something that I just love being a part of, and I want it to happen every single year. So congratulations, gentlemen. You guys deserve it.
Dylan's team is playing banana rules, Savannah Banana Rules. He just called, upset on me about baseball. I'm like, what?
And last, we'd like to introduce Jan Pauley, our head softball coach.
Thank you all for coming. So we had a great season this year, we won our regional, we won our CSL again for seven years in a row, I believe it was six years in a row. So our three student athletes here tonight were just fantastic for us, on the field and off the field. The first student athlete that we should recognize is Emma O'Flaherty. She's not here tonight, but she was nominated for third-team All-States. So Emma, congratulations. Girls, come on up. We have three of our student athletes here tonight. Senior Amanda Tushke, junior Morgan Hart, and sophomore Kate Pangilina. And I'll just be brief, I'll say just a few words about these girls. So Amanda, as a junior, last year she was third-team All-State, and then this year she is second-team All-State. Amanda brings a lot of energy to our team and our dugout, and she was our spark plug this year for sure. And we are very proud of her accomplishments for the two seasons that she started in our infield. She had battled an injury all of sophomore year, and she missed freshman year for COVID. So she's really just a two-year varsity athlete with experience playing, and she had a fantastic career here, and we're super proud of her. We wish her all the best as she continues on her softball career at the University of St. Mary in Minnesota. Morgan Hart, she is a, was a junior this year. She was a three-year varsity player. She pitched a lot this season because we had some injuries, so she stepped up and filled a need that our team desperately needed her to do. And Morgan hit 402 this season, and she was named to the third-team All-State. Morgan is a leader in our dugout, and she is just a fantastic kid to coach. We look forward to next season, as she will lead us. And we really enjoyed coaching her this year, and she was a great teammate, and we are super proud of her development, and congratulations, Morgan. Kate, Kate was just a sophomore this year. She is a fantastic athlete, and she played, had a great year. She played mostly second base for us this season, she hit 430, and is just a really hard worker. She's kind of a quiet kid, doesn't say a whole lot, but she works really hard, and we are really super proud of her development and her contribution this season as a sophomore coming in to play varsity for the first time. So she had a great season, she was named a second-team All-State, she hit 430, and just a fantastic kid to coach. Congratulations. Thank you.
Our last recognition tonight, we'd like to recognize our team from Libertyville High School Girl Soccer, if any girl soccer players, if they would come up here at this time. No, there's a lot that couldn't make it. So I'd like to recognize them for their third place in the IHSA. They defeated Glenbrook South in the regionals to advance to the sectionals, where they defeated Frem to nothing. And then, super sectionals, they defeated Nutria 1-0. And then, at the state finals, they did run into a tough Barrington team, lost to Barrington in the semifinals. And if anyone knows, when you go to state and there's only four teams and you lose that first one, it's really hard to come back, but they did a nice job coming back in the third, fourth-place game and finished in third place, defeating Lincoln Way East by a score of 2 to 1. So congratulations to the Libertyville Girl Soccer Team on their third-place finish. And that concludes all of our recognitions. I appreciate all the parents coming out today, but also all the dedication that you have throughout the seasons. And it's not just the seasons, but it's the off-seasons, it's the driving, it's the, you know, sitting in a track meet when it's probably raining and cold, going to a golf match when nobody else is there watching, you know, except maybe parents, and going to gyms to watch badminton and basketball and all that stuff. So, you know, athletes, if you get a chance, make sure you thank your parents for coming or your grandparents for attending throughout the year. You know, without your family and support, you probably wouldn't be here with some of the achievements that you have. So make sure you thank them, and I'd like to congratulate all of our athletes on their wonderful accomplishments this year. Thank you. And you are free to go, unless you want to sit around for the rest of the meeting, but you are welcome to stay.
Okay, I guess we're done here. And it's back to quiet.
Yes, well, we are going to move right along in the interest of getting to public comment. We do have one person that signed in, I'd like to ask Katie Talarico to come to the podium. Oh, Talarico, my apologies.
Hi, everybody. As you probably know, my name is Katie Talarico. Impressive, yeah. Impressive athletic accomplishments. But I just wanted to talk a bit tonight about academics. I'm a pediatrician, so academics are really important to me. I really value education, went through a lot of years of schooling. I also have three kids, one who is a bit younger, but one who'll be a junior LHS, and one who graduated from LHS last year. And I've really noticed quite a bit of a difference in the academic experience from now till back in 2018. Some of the things that are concerning to me are the lack of homework. Maybe not lack of homework, but sometimes there are assignments given, and they won't be given points if they're turned in, so this discourages some kids from doing them. Homework is good for our kids, it helps them learn. When a teacher presents material in class, if it's not revisited that night, it might exit the kid's brain pretty quickly, and it'll be more difficult for them to do well on their test. I think homework's really important, and I think to not give a point value to it, you know, it's kind of assuming all kids are intrinsically motivated, and they're just gonna do the homework because they know it's gonna help their learning, but the majority of kids aren't really intrinsically motivated yet. And especially this group of kids who suffered with COVID, they missed out on their middle school years, when a lot of that sort of intrinsic motivation would have been helped along. I'm also seeing just a lack of accountability, you know, there's not really deadlines. If there are assignments given, the assignments can be turned in up until the end of the semester. So again, this isn't teaching our kids those time-management skills that they need to do well in school. And it's not helping them learn the material. If there's an assignment given, it needs to be done when it's due, so that that will, that material will be further ingrained in their brain, and it'll help them do well on their test. And when they take their tests, I know that they now have the opportunity to do test retakes. And I get how, in theory, this could seem like a great idea, give kids a chance to do better on the test if they didn't fully master the concepts. But I don't see how this can work when there's so much material to get through in a semester. A unit, unit one, quite often, if it's not mastered, will affect learning unit two, because the concepts in unit two have to be learned from the concepts mastered in unit one. So I think what happens is a lot of these kids, you know, maybe don't study very much for their test the first time around, because they know they can retake it, so they're not really mastering those concepts, and then they're trying to play catch-up all semester long with trying to go back and do a retake, that sometimes they have a whole month to get to do again. And it's also just not really preparing them for life after high school. Colleges don't give test retakes, and life, many times, you don't get to do retakes. So these things just bother me, and I think they probably come from a good place. I think there's probably a concern for our kids' mental health, and this is where it's coming from, right? You know, we have to give kids a little more grace and, you know...
I'm sorry, that's three minutes, so we'd like you to finish your thought and if you could wrap it up.
Yeah, I just want to mention that it's backfiring, because this isn't helping their mental health. When they're going off to college, they're not prepared, and they're, a lot are struggling. And instead of being home with their family and friends and their community that supported them through many years to help them, they're alone. I think that there's an AP concept, that AP psychology concept that District 128 teaches that's really important, and it talks about how important stress is to learning. There is a minimal stress level that's needed to learn. And I think you guys are, you know, in trying so hard to help kids' mental health, you're under-stressing many of them to the point where they're getting bored, they're not achieving, they're getting depressed. So I think in trying to help their mental health, you're essentially hurting it. I got a mailer recently about proficiency scores...
I'm sorry, you're way over the three-minute limit, so if you could please wrap it up.
About the mailer I got about proficiency scores being 60% for ELA and math, that is very concerning to me, that is why I'm here. What is the plan to change that? I think that's not very good. I don't know what proficiency means, is it 50th percentile?
So you did give us your email, and someone from the district office will follow...
I gave you what, I'm sorry?
Your email?
No, I didn't.
Your email address is on...
Email that I emailed.
No, no, there's an email address on here.
Right.
And someone from the administration can follow up with you about those concerns. Thank you. Do we have anybody else wishing to address the board tonight? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move right along. We do have some FOIA requests that came in.
Yes, we received two FOIA requests this month, and they both were filled, and they are in your packet.
Great. And then another favorite part of ours, we can move on to good news.
Wonderful. And again, building off of that in-person celebration we had, we have more students and staff to recognize. The District 128 Special Olympics earned several honors at the Special Olympics State Summer Games held earlier this month in Bloomington-Normal. The Storm athletes brought home the following honors. Soccer team won bronze. Team members were Chris Morozin, Chase Miller, Joseph Mahler, Charles Sampson, Hayden Johns, Libby Karsten, Albin Agiza, Danielle Gornados, Xavier Gornados, and Hazel Morales. Bachi Luke Bardwell won a silver. And in track 200-meter race, the silver went to Mackenzie Runkey, and Ben Peterson won the bronze. Next, in fine arts, a mixed media drawing and writing piece by Vernon Hills senior Val Baikova was selected for the 21-minus-what-was-what-is exhibit held earlier this month at the Museum of Contemporary Art in Chicago. Designed by Chicago Youth and curated and hosted by the MCA's Teen Creativity Agency, 21 minus is the MCA's annual exposition of youth and creativity. The Libertyville High School Esports CSGO team finished fourth in the High School Esports League National Championship on May 21st. Approximately 400 teams from across the country competed during the season, with the top 16 making the national playoffs. This is the fourth semester in a row the team has made the playoffs, but its first top-four finish. Team members are Eric Vu, Kyle Lee, Cameron Huang, John Murphy, Aiden Merchant, Chase Running, Abraham Kinones, and Nick Olson. The team is coached by Mark Bu Sing. Next, all Physics I and II and AP Physics C students take the American Association of Physics Teachers Physics Bowl Test in April. LHS competes in a regional consisting of schools from Illinois, Wisconsin, Iowa, and Nebraska. Worldwide, about 6,300 students took the Division One test, and about 3,200 students took the Division Two test. This year, the first, this year, LHS' first-year AP physics students competing in Division One placed third in the region, and the second-year students competing in Division Two placed first in the region. In Division Two, senior Ahmad Bahoud received the second-highest individual score in the region. The five students who contributed to the school score were Division One, Ed Stewart, Will Bain, Will Carney, Seif Kotib, and Braden Bradford. In Division Two, Ahmad Bamood, Oliver Scanio, Ahmed Mostafa, Belinda Lee, and Aditya Jakara. And that is the end of our good news for June.
Thank you. It is always so nice, we have...
I take that back. Hot off the presses, I have two additions, actually. We are graced in our presence here to have a new executive board member for ED RED, which stands for Education, Research, and Development. And it is a consortium of suburban school districts who pool their resources to try and have an influence on policy and other improvement goals and actions in the state of Illinois. And our very own Lisa Hessel is going to be serving on a two-year term for the ED RED Board, and we appreciate her taking on that additional duty. Lastly, again, I think anytime we take on a big effort like this, it's wonderful to recognize the team who participated. I received a thank-you note from the IHSA thanking the Vernon Hills team for hosting the 2023 IHSA Boys Tennis State Finals. The tournament is an incredibly large undertaking with 384 athletes participating and nearly 500 matches being played over the course of three days. Our district's contribution to the tournament are greatly appreciated, so please share our gratitude with your Building Administrators, Athletic Department, and Building Grounds Department for their efforts in running the tournament. So we are very proud of our Vernon Hills team and making sure that we shined very strongly among all of the state tennis teams who visited our campus. Now, we are done with good news.
Thank you to the Vernon Hills High School tennis team for hosting, and thank you, Dr. Herman, for the spotlight on our many talented students. It is always so impressive to see how many talented students we have in activities, fine arts, as well as athletics. So we are going to move on to our consent vote agenda. We are looking for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed. Benjamin, I move to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
Rooney, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
The motion passes. The consent vote agenda is approved. Moving on to individual items for action. First, we have the adoption of our fiscal year 24 budget. This is in relation to the hearing that we just held. I don't believe there's any further explanation necessary unless you would like to give it some context.
Just that we're here, this is the soonest that I think we've ever adopted a budget, so that's exciting.
Thank you, and congratulations to you and your team for moving up this timeline. We appreciate it. It helps us make better decisions. So we are looking for a motion to adopt the fiscal year 24 budget.
Carmichael, so moved.
Drumkey, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye. Motion passes.
Reminder, we need every, all of you to sign before you leave, so thank you.
Great, thank you for the reminder. Moving on to the fiscal year 2024 Illinois Association of School Board IASB member dues. As we discussed, this is an important association that we are a member of that serves all school boards in the state of Illinois. We are looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 IASB member dues.
Rooney, motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 IASB member dues in the dollar amount of $10,727.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Drumkey, second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Were you waiting?
No, Don and I were having. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
And motion passes. Next on the agenda, the semi-annual review of closed session minutes. We are looking for a motion that confirms the need for confidentiality still exists for all current closed session minutes and those listed below and all shall remain in the closed file.
Drumkey, move to motion that the need for confidentiality still exists for all current closed session minutes and those listed below and all shall remain in the closed file.
Benjamin, second. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
I just want to comment on the wonderful job that Carol Skodin does taking our notes during our closed sessions.
Yes, I would say that getting a chance to review them always lets us reflect on how good you are at your job. So thank you, Carol, and thank you, Dr. Herman, for pointing that out for us. Motion passes and we are moving on to approve and adopt the 12 updated board policies as presented. Looking for a motion to approve those.
Carmichael, so moved.
Rooney, second.
Any discussion? We did just come out of committee and discuss them extensively.
If it seems like we're flying through this, we just got out of committee and now we're here, so we're moving along.
Last month.
Yes, this is the second review.
I'm not sure how much more we could.
I don't think we could discuss them anymore, but now would be the time, since we have a motion and a second, if anyone would like to discuss it further. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on, we are going to look for a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the commencement of social media litigation. I would like to give some background on this as listed in the packet. In the recent years, the proliferation of widespread access to and use of social media among public school students has expanded dramatically, leading to significant risks of anxiety, depression, thoughts of self-harm, and suicidal ideation among our students. This widespread adoption, consumption, and use of social media has caused the district to incur costs in the form of staff time, disciplinary proceedings, emotional and social counseling, medical services, and other costs with the expectation that these costs will only increase unless and until student use of social media is reduced or the social media platforms reform their practices in attracting students. The district has determined that it is necessary, advantageous, desirable, and in the public interest and the best interests of the students of the district that it participates in this litigation by filing a lawsuit seeking monetary and non-monetary damages against the above referenced social media companies and other parties responsible for the harm caused by social media platforms. I think everybody has had a chance to review the recommendations from our attorneys. This litigation will not cost the district anything other than a bit of time on the part of our administrators. If there is a monetary settlement that the district realizes, we will give 20% as a fee to the legal team in California that has organized this. It is the same legal team that successfully sued Juul. So unless we have.
That's J-U-U-L.
That is correct. That is correct. Not the.
Not the grocery.
Not the fine grocery.
The first time you said it, I was like, what did they do?
I know. Not to be confused with the fine and outstanding Chicagoland grocery retailer, Juul. Lawsuit was successful as a national federal suit against Juul, the vape manufacturer. This is the same firm bringing this suit. It is something we discussed in committee, but if we could have a motion and a second, we could discuss any further thoughts or concerns. Can I just point out, I believe you said 20%, and it says 25% here?
I didn't say 25%.
Okay, just wanted to clarify for the public. Thank you very much. Yes, I misspoke. It is 25% of any settlement.
Move to approve the resolution authorizing commencement of social media litigation, and that was Carmichael.
Rooney, second.
Thank you. For further discussion, I would like to note that it is not just monetary damages that this suit seeks. Although that is important, it is even more important that the social media firms are forced to reform their practices. They are in the business of addiction. They are willfully harming our children and they do not do the necessary age checks. In order to sign up for a gas rewards card, you have to verify your age and identity. There's no reason that they, the social media companies can't verify the age of people who are signing up. Furthermore, they need to be forced to cooperate with school districts and local law enforcement when there is a threat. They refuse to disclose locations or to take down harmful content. So just as important, I just wanted to point that out, one of the motivators for bringing this suit in the first place. Any other discussion?
I just had a question. If we, do we know how many other districts are party to the suit as of yet?
It was mentioned.
Yeah, there's about three, excuse me, about 300, 325 at the time that we received this information that had already signed up.
Okay.
And over the next month or two, I think we'll have.
That number is expected to grow. Yeah.
That number is expected to grow.
And speaking with other superintendents in the North Suburban Superintendent's Group, several of them were planning to take it in June or July to their boards for approval also.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Motion passes. I think it's something we're going to be proud to take apart of. Moving on. Next on the agenda is the District 128 Intergovernmental Agreement with the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services. If we could have someone just summarize what this IGA will do. I know Kelly is not here. This was prepared by Kelly Hartwig, our Director of Special Services. Dr. E.B., do you want to summarize for us?
Yes.
Thank you.
So good evening, everyone. So just to again summarize, right now, the Illinois Department of Healthcare, Family, and Services are now requiring, or require each local education agency to enter into an IGA with the state's Medicaid Administrative Outreach Vendor. And we have to, and it requires us to do this IGA by June 30th. Basically, beforehand, we, school districts throughout the state of Illinois received Medicaid and Medicaid Administrative Outreach funding for students that normally or could also receive what we would consider hospital services such as speech and language, psychological services, IEP meetings and IEP minutes are included into that for students with special needs. However, due to the significant needs of our students, especially those that receive Medicaid, they have expanded these services. And so now throughout the district, we are looking at doing, into governmental agreements so that we can provide services to all of our Medicaid students, those who have services as well as those who do not.
Great. So my understanding is generally that this will allow us to recoup some additional expenses that we are outlaying on behalf of our students.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the District 128 IGA with the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services.
Rooney, so moved.
Drumkey, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Now we are going to discuss a motion to approve the fiscal year 24 Treasurers Bond in the amount of $18,000. The fee for the bond is $18,000. The amount of the bond is $30 million. We did discuss this extensively in committee tonight as well, so looking for a motion, please.
Drumkey, move to approve the fiscal year 24 Treasurers Bond in the amount of $18,000.
Rooney, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? We will wait for roll call for.
I think I'm first.
To come back.
I think I'm first.
He's taking one for the team.
Yeah. I think it's worth reminding. Yeah, now I can think.
He's ready.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Just. Motion passes. Moving on. We are going to look for a motion to approve the fiscal year 23 Audit Engagement with Miller Cooper. We also discussed this in committee. These are the audit services for our finances. Will, the agreement will facilitate the fiscal year 2023 audit, which is required by state and federal law. Looking for a motion to approve.
Rooney, motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 Audit Engagement with Miller Cooper in the amount of $56,700.
Benjamin, second. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on, the contracts for drapery cleaning and flame retardant application for both Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School. These are contracts that will take care of cleaning and fireproofing the draperies at both buildings. We are looking for a motion to approve a contract in the amount of $40,176, sorry, $40,176.28 for Libertyville High School and $48,026.75 for Vernon Hills High School. Benjamin, so moved.
Drumkey, second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just one clarification. It doesn't fireproof them, it's fire retardant.
Fire, thank you.
Slows them down.
Thank you. Good clarification. Seeing no discussion, roll call, please.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye. Motion passes. We move on to items for information and we'll turn it over to Dr. Herman for a superintendent's report.
Sure, if we could call up, I just put a few slides together just to give some visuals. Two main things that I would like to update the board on tonight. And it's going to be presented in just a minute. So as we have been working diligently on the strategic plan, setting the goals and the action plans, and now working on the implementation timeline and staff training, we are working diligently to try and create one main hub for this information. We have been working and, you know, as different questions have been asked among the board, we've created some different tools to monitor that, but they're separate tools, they're separate spreadsheets. So I just wanted to remind the board that we do have, if you could click on the goals. So we have all of our goals and they are linked on our action plan, or they're linked on our website. They were also sent to all residents as a hard copy. So we have done a very good job communicating what our three goal areas are and the major initiatives that are associated with each one of those. We'll continue to have those available, but we still, you'll see here that although it has a summary of the action plans further down, it doesn't necessarily have the timeframe for each one of those. That would be difficult to necessarily capture on a one-page summary like we have here on the website. Well, if you could go back to the second document. So we also have our action plan summaries and that, again, was developed by teams of administrators and teachers who work together to say, if this is our goal, here's the actions that we need to take, and they're spread out over five years, trying to make sure we're pacing ourselves. But we're also trying to make sure that we can see all of this because these were developed by teachers who are very passionate and administrators who are very passionate, and they are detailed action plans. So a lot of this is for the committee work, not necessarily all of the work that will be done or perceived exterior. Not all of this is going to impact all staff, not all of this will impact all students. So we want to honor this work that's driving individual committees and continue to find ways to sort of progress monitor this. Where are we with each committee? Well, if you could go back to the next. We also put together as a DLT team something that we called our Change Map. Of all of those things that were listed in the action plan, what are those actions that really are going to impact either staff practice or student practice? It's not just committee work of researching or developing something. It's when something will be developed, something will be changed. And so those would be some things that we want to showcase and make sure that people are aware of, sort of coming soon kind of things, and making sure that students, staff, parents understand the sequence at which things will be rolled out. And again, then understanding some of the professional learning that's going to be needed prior to some of these implementations. If you could go back to the key. We also want to keep track of the members. This is a copy of last year's member. We have our three strategic plan area teams. Then we also have our grading and assessment team, which is a committee that's continued for a few years through COVID. And then we also have our use of time team. So each year, we see which administrators, which teachers, other people want to participate on these teams, making sure that all staff know who is representing them on these committees, what their meeting schedule is going to be. So we'll be, again, updating this for this year's committee action team so everyone knows who's representing them. The next document is our professional learning map. And this is one that we put together, right now, this is in draft form because we put together the whole roadmap for the five years, but then annually, we take a deeper dive to say, now, how are we going to use our four in-service days? So you'll see that we have the day when we all come back and really focusing on positive culture and climate, the communication plan that we're going to kick off, some new attendance procedures. And then the afternoon, there'll be some support and learning for teachers, for grading and assessment, for student services staff, for the insight tool and MTSS progress monitoring. And then the whole second day is dedicated for teachers to do the work they need individually and in their PLCs to prepare for school. You'll scroll down, you see then we have one day in October that we have some learning targets and topics for, but that we'll be working with our instructional coaches to manage some of the individual sessions. And then we have one other in-service day that we'll be planning in February. But we have more learning that needs to take place than what we can fit on what really is three, two real opportunities for professional learning. The other two days are very much dedicated with building prep, which is what you need as a professional to get ready to serve our students. So we are also trying to map out additional time. That could be our Wednesday morning teacher work time. Teachers have the PLC ones for their agenda, but we do have admin and building ones that we could deliver some professional learning and provide some support there. We're also looking at an increase in the number of D128 university classes that would be aligned to our strategic plan and professional learning, as well as looking at things that are in smaller groups that aren't necessarily for across the whole district, having those be opportunities for small groups to have days away with subs. Again, not ideal, but when it's not the whole staff, those are the ones that we would rather spend the money on providing subs. So we're mapping all of that out. And again, as administrators over the summer, doing from input that we received, but then working with our instructional coaches and department chairs and others to do all the fine tuning for each session. And then the last link was making sure that we are not just doing good work internally, but this document reminded us that many of the goal areas that we selected and work that we're doing is also aligned with changes that are required for ISBE. So we're trying to make sure that we say, here's our goals. And if you scroll down, Bo, you'll see that we have our three goals, the actions that were taken, and then scroll down, links to all of the state mandates that we will be fulfilling as we are achieving each of these particular phases of implementation. So we have been doing a lot of work to try and manage the heavy lift that this work is. But Mary and I will be working with one of our new technology support groups to figure out how can we organize and communicate this in one place on our website. So staff who want to know, I want to see the minutes from the Health and Well-being Minutes, or I want to see who's on that committee. We will have one place for parents, for the board members, for staff to be able to go to find any of this information, for the big-picture view, as well as those who are really interested and want to take a. to find any of this information for the big picture view, as well as those who are really interested and want to take a deep dive. So Mary and I will be working with our team. And also this came up in our, the audit data that we're, will be presenting to you in July. So we feel like we should have a model that's taking shape enough to share with you in July and potentially get feedback from the board members. And then it will be ready to roll out with all staff in August. So just wanted to give you a really good update on that. So we, we have a lot of the pieces of the puzzle and we have a lot of the data already gathered. On the last stage, you'll be putting it together and I really look forward to working with Mary to make that happen. The second thing that I wanted to give an update on, and that is I know we asked for data to be gathered from parents that would inform boards' future action on criteria for making the school calendar decisions. And so we were able to get the questions that board members helped us refine. And they went live on June 5th. And so as parents are completing all of their registration questions, updating of information and payment of fees, one of the steps in the seven-step process is completing the inventory to give us their preferences on school calendar. So that closes June 29th. So that will give us time in July to analyze that data and then share it with you in July. Again, get any direction from you so that we know how that data could be informing the criteria. And then I assume if there's anything else the board needs, we would gather that information for you. But that decision could be made as early as July or August in terms of how you guys see moving forward. So those are my two updates. Any questions?
First of all, the effort to come up with the map is a very important and ambitious project. But I think it will be really incredibly helpful for all of our stakeholders as we move forward with the important work that we're doing. So thank you for doing that.
Wonderful.
Okay, next on the agenda. Any board comments or events that have taken place that you'd like to share?
I had the opportunity to ride in the Libertyville Days Parade with Congressman Schneider.
Fun.
Which- Congressman Schneider was not the most notable person.
Yeah, my, my spotlight did get stolen by my seven-year-old granddaughter who was living her best life, chatting with the congressman, waving her flag, having a ball. But it was really nice to see, you know, all the community come out. And we were sandwiched in between the band and the LHS band and the LHS Poms, which was so fun. So it just was a nice day.
Thank you for representing us.
Yes.
As far as Ed Redd goes, I'm excited to be involved. I think that our district will have some good contributions to be able to make to the legislative agenda to support quality public education. I will note that Ed Redd is sponsoring Legislative Breakfast, similar to the one that IASB did that we hosted at Libertyville High School. This one is in Wheeling on August 6th, eight-thirty in the morning. So if you would like to join us, Carol very kindly forwarded the email invitation and is willing to RSVP for our group. And I would love to have our district be well represented. As far as the foundation board goes, I want to be sure that I think publicly, the outgoing director, our chairperson Nancy Beaumont, who has served on the foundation for many years in several roles, is moving on. And a new chairperson will be named at the foundation board meeting in August. But we really want to thank Nancy. Just as a refresher, the foundation provides innovation grants to teachers in the district as well as funds a student in need fund for students that have any needs outside of what the district provides. So it's a really wonderful organization that supports the district and we thank Nancy for her years of service.
Quick correction. The Ed Redd breakfast is August 3rd, the Thursday, yeah.
I said the 6th.
I know. I was like, this is a Sunday.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Okay. Any other comments or events from board members? We do not have an IASB report this evening nor a CEDAL report.
No, we do.
Oh, we do have a CEDAL report.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did have a CEDAL report.
That's okay.
My goodness. Sorry.
There was a CEDAL governing board meeting on June 7th that I was able to attend up in Gages Lake. And there are a few things of mention. We appointed some new executive board members, including the appointment of our new Fiscal Year 23 to 24 Treasurer. We approved our calendar for the governing board for the next year. So I have those all scheduled and ready to attend. We reached a three-year collective bargaining agreement with our CEDAL Support Staff Association. And so that is set to begin, I think, at the start of the school year. And then we had a presentation like we did here of our tentative budget and then went on to approve our budget. And highlights of the CEDAL budget include a 5% tuition rate increase to member districts. So that directly affects us. And that's 1% more than last year. And, and here's why, in case anyone is curious. Like us, we spend most of our money on our staff, which is a good place to put it. But there were staff salary and benefit cost increases. Some of our contracted services that we contract out went up in cost. We had to, this year, offer some recruitment stipends. So there are some positions within CEDAL that are just really difficult to fill at times. And so this is almost like a sign-on bonus. So that was, you know, a costly thing that we had to do. Additionally, we had to fund referral incentives. So staff could refer, current staff could refer people that they knew. And if someone was hired, a referral incentive was paid. We are using paraprofessionals as student teachers. So CEDAL is actually looking to certify its paraprofessionals into certified staff. So that's, that costs a little more money to do that. And then we, it says increased supports to programs and member districts. So I think there's just been a broadening of what we can offer to member districts in terms of services and programs available. Interestingly though, both enrollment and staffing are down. But there is a 5% rate increase in operations and maintenance. And I think this just follows along those lines of inflation affecting everything. Additionally, something that really kind of came up, well, just kind of, I think was higher than maybe ever before. Our contract services increased 17.8%. So that's a noteworthy number. So to kind of sum up, just like everything else in the world, CEDAL also, you know, has a budget that is ever increasing and, and the costs are, you know, continue to be of concern that we need to, you know, we need to fulfill our duties every year and it just continues to get more costly. So we, we see that reflected in the larger sense all over the place. And CEDAL is not exempt from those stresses. But that's, that's what I have to report until next time.
Thank you. Benjamin, this is a really important partnership and we really appreciate the time that you spend as our delegate.
It's so essential. You know, so many of our home district students find their home at CEDAL. And that may not be necessarily anywhere near Libertyville or Vernon Hills. Some of our students are at one of the many CEDAL properties or are, you know, taught at other, like, within the consortium of schools that's part of CEDAL onsite at their schools. So it's just interesting sometimes to put yourself in the shoes of these students or these families who send their kids to CEDAL programs all throughout Lake County, but reside here in district and to understand what that really does mean for them on a day-to-day basis and what those experiences are like. So grateful to be a part of it. It's always a fulfilling role that I get to, you know, enjoy. So thank you.
Well, we appreciate the time and fun doing it.
Of course.
Okay. Future agenda items are listed. Are there any additional items that we would like to discuss?
As noted earlier, I will add the data from the calendar from the parents. And that will be an agenda item for the P and P meeting.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Then we are looking for a motion to convene in closed session for the purpose of discussing employment of an employee under 5 ILCS 120/2C1, as well as collective negotiating matters under 5 ILCS 120/2C2.
Carmichael, so moved.
Rooney, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will take a quick five-minute bio break and then convene in closed session. Afterwards, we will be voting on a resolution authorizing a notice to remedy when we return to open session. Thank you, everyone. Okay, at 9:26 PM, I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to return to open session.
So moved. Rooney, so moved.
Carmichael, second.
Great. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are reconvened in open session. May I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing a notice to remedy for Jamie Rubin?
Rooney, so moved. So moved.
Benjamin, second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd like to ask for a motion and second to adjourn the board meeting at 9:27 PM.
Drumkey, so moved.
Carmichael, second.
Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.